Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. Apologies, we're a couple of minutes late starting. That's a reflection of the fact we've been in six hours of nonstop meetings. So we'll move straight into this. Good evening. My name is Richard Stewart. I'm the Mayor of Coquitlam, and on behalf of City Council, I'd like to welcome you all to this evening's public hearing, which is a public hearing into bylaws that will be introduced to you in a moment by the deputy city clerk. Council for the City of Coquitlam has given first reading to these bylaws and directed that a public hearing be held. Staff from the city's planning and development department will first present a summary of each proposed bylaw as we open that bylaw. The floor will then be open to anyone in the room with views on that proposed bylaw. Those that have been pre-registered will have the first opportunity to speak, and then we'll go to those who are in attendance who haven't pre-registered. Council has asked me to set the ground rules. We stress to you all that this is a public hearing. It's an opportunity for anyone who has a view on the proposed bylaw to make that view known to council members. Council members are here with an open mind and are here to listen to your input. No one has prejudged the outcome of these applications. But the rules are, it's not a question and answer period. It's not an opportunity to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with either council members, with staff, or with those in the audience who may be opposed to your point of view. So we ask that you restrict your comments to the proposed bylaw, that you be as brief and concise as possible. We ask speakers to respect a five-minute time limit in order that everyone who wishes to speak is able to do so. If you have more than five minutes of good stuff, you can get back in the line and take a second crack at it, as long as you're providing new or additional information. We ask that the audience be respectful of each speaker and allow that speaker to make his or her point without interruption. To that end, we ask that you please refrain from clapping, from cheering, from booing, from any comments about any presentation that's made tonight. As chair of this meeting, I reserve the right to conclude. Any presentation that doesn't relate to the bylaw, that becomes abusive, or that becomes repetitive of views of that speaker is already made known to council members. Please note that if you have a written submission, you have anything written down, that you want to be part of the permanent record, please hand it in to the deputy city clerk at the clerk's desk prior to the adjournment of that item. When I call for the third and final time for speakers and then adjourn that item, we can't hear anything else. As council members, we can't receive any more information about that item until after we've voted on fourth reading. Immediately following adjournment of the public hearing tonight, we'll have a regular council meeting in order that council can give considerations to items on the council meeting but also on the public hearing agenda. So the items that are considered at public hearings tonight will also be considered afterwards at a council meeting. If, however, during the public hearing, any council member wants more information or that we don't have sufficient information upon which to make the decision, we can consider to defer that item and not vote on it tonight. I now call on Ms. Law to introduce the bylaws on tonight's agenda, and the planning and development staff to make a presentation on the first item.
Thank you, Your Worship. Item one is an application to amend the city zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 761 Miller Avenue from RT1 two-family residential to RT3 triplex and quadruplex residential, bylaw number 4377 2013.
This site of the zoning, the application is on the north side of Miller Avenue between Grant and Robinson Streets. The site is designated neighborhood attached residential under the official community plan. Zoning on the site into the north, south, east, and west is RT1 two-family residential. A single-family dwelling is currently on the site. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site in conformance with the official community plan to RT3 triplex and quadruplex residential, to ultimately build a quadruplex, four detached residential units with detached accessory off-street parking from the rear lane. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning by law number 4377.
Thank you very much. I'm advised by staff that the applicant for this property, Satendra Mann, is in the audience with a PowerPoint and prepared to answer any questions or concerns related to the property. Is Satendra Mann here? There we go.
My name is Satendra Mann, and my company is Archetype Design. My address is 233 West 28th Street in North Vancouver. And I'm here to just speak a little bit about the project and address some concerns that I've heard and so on. So I just wanted to introduce our project. So for this project, we have proposed four small detached units for this site. And we looked at a number of alternatives to develop this site. And just to summarize them quickly, one is for a single-family home. So on the site, we could build a very large, single-family house, maybe six or seven thousand square feet. Or we could do a duplex for this site. And the other option is to subdivide the site into two smaller lots where we could have a legal suite or a coach house to the rear for each site. So we felt that the subdivision approach, you know, kind of resulted in four families in any case. And we felt that the best use of the site was to propose the smaller units in this detached form. We wanted to, we didn't feel that the single-family home would be desirable from a selling point of view, and the duplex is also very large. So we thought that four smaller, affordable units was saleable and also offers a small-scale, friendly development approach to the site. So to this intent, what we've, my clients are interested in having a high-quality building with the use of materials and landscape. And so this is what we're proposing. So the project, these are views from the street, from Miller. So it would fit into the context of the street by having two small buildings in the front. And we're using materials such as hardy and clear stained cedar siding, heavy timber elements, and stone cladding as well, and large windows, and so on. So we hope that these will look very attractive as well. The landscape plan, sorry, just not in the right order. The landscape plan provides for a very extensive and intensive development of the site in terms of landscape. And unfortunately, some trees need to be removed, but these are being replaced with 11 trees. And in addition to that, there's about 500 plants being proposed. So I just wanted to point out that while the site doesn't have large lawn areas, what it does have is very intensively landscaped and highly usable outdoor space. In addition to that, to minimize the impermeable surfaces, the hard surfaces of the site, 100% of the paving on this site is permeable. And so in this way, we've minimized runoff from the site, and the stormwater is handled on the site to a large extent. There was, we wanted to ensure that this building, this proposal is a positive contribution to the neighborhood. And so there's some issues that we've looked at to do that. And one is to ensure privacy and minimize impact on neighbors. So these elevations, you can see from the side elevations that there's, these are the neighboring elevations, the top two up there. So there's very few windows, and the windows that we propose are mostly tall, so they're avoiding overlook issues. And also, within the site, on the side elevations, we've kept the windows to a minimum area. On the sides as well, there would be a six-foot-high fence, also blocking any overlook issues. The massing of the buildings also is kept low scale. So there's two stories, there's no basements, and the buildings are at grade. And the roof profile is also kept low to keep it from being very tall. The roof shape is shaped to minimize shading onto the neighbors. Also, I just wanted to, I won't go through the plans, but I just wanted to make clear that it's a two-story building, and there's no basements, and the plans of the units are a comfortable three-bedroom size with a den. And there's, as far as I can tell, there's no opportunities for suites in these layouts. And I mean, I guess anybody can fit suites anywhere, but it would be hard with these layouts. So I just wanted to mention that. And from our first reading, some council members had expressed concerns about the parking, the amount of parking that we've provided on the site. And so I just, and so we explored options on how to achieve more parking, and I just wanted to go over that with you. One thing I wanted to point out, this is our proposed parking that we've submitted so far. I just wanted to point out that with the closing of the driveway on Miller Street, all our parking is accessed from the lane. So because we've closed that driveway, originally, you could only park one car in front of this lot, because you have to maintain three meters to a parking stall from the edge of the driveway. And so effectively, you could park one, or maybe one and a half, car there. And with the removal of that driveway, you can now, we've shown three generous parallel parking stalls in front of the unit. But we did look at further options to add more parking, and this is what we feel is the most effective route. And so at the rear, we've kind of, I'll just do a larger view of that. So we proposed to kind of flip the garages around a little bit so that we can get a parking stall on each side, an additional parking stall. So we would push the existing parking stalls that we've proposed further into the site and add two tandem stalls to the site. And we're still well within our minimum yard areas, which is 400 square feet. So we've got 480 and 460. And in this way, we're able to kind of informally provide for two stalls per unit. And in addition to that, there's a possible three available on the street. Also, there was some, I just wanted to also clarify about the lane in terms of the size of the lane. Just to be clear, the lane is a standard-sized lane. Our proposal will be making improvements to the surfacing of the lane and so on, but the existing lane meets the six-meter requirement for lane, and it's just like any other lane that you would find. And also, with the improvements on the street, we would also be adding a sidewalk. This is required for our development, and it's anticipated that future developments would, you know, continue the sidewalk. So pedestrian access is handled in that way. We did also do a study of the street parking, and I'm just not quite sure how to access that.
Do you want the other?
Yeah, please. Yeah, so this is an analysis of the available parking within 50 meters of our site, from the edges of the site. And the stall sizes are parallel parking stall sizes. And this diagram illustrates the parking that would be available if you were to legally park with the three meters from each driveway and so on. I mean, you can imagine that there would informally be a little bit more than this, but at a minimum, within 50 meters of our site, there's 17 possible parking spots. And that's about it. So I just wanted to let you know, if you have any questions or need any clarifications, I'd be happy to address those.
Well, thank you very much. Actually, that's a very detailed analysis of a number of elements that come up at these moments during public hearings, so I really appreciate it. We've got one speaker so far, councillor Sakura.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask you a few questions. It's four units with two cottage houses?
What I had mentioned earlier is that you could subdivide the site potentially into two lots and have a single-family house on each lot with the carriage house. What we're proposing are four detached units, which is different altogether.
Okay, so how many, and no basements, of course. How many entrances to each house?
There's a front entrance and a rear entrance to each house.
So in other words, and you've got a main floor and a second floor. Is there any kitchen space on the second floor?
No.
No kitchen space on the second floor. Parking, you've got eight parking spaces for four units.
That's right.
Okay, and the way you've got a diagram here, looks like cars are parked behind each other. Am I correct?
Yes, there's two spots.
Okay, so what I do, I wake up a neighbor because he's blocking me behind, so he can move so I can get out?
No, the idea is that if you have a guest visiting, or, you know, two people living in the same house, you know, they would sort of facilitate each other.
I know, but you said eight parking spaces. You didn't mention anything about visitor parking space.
Oh, I see. I just meant that...
Where's the visitor parking space?
Well, there's three spots on the street, and those spots, those tandem spots could be used for, you know, the particular unit.
Okay, let's get back to this one. So each car is parked behind each other.
Mm-hmm.
So you've got eight cars, and they're in lane. Who moves first? Who gets out? Who gets in? To me, it doesn't make any sense.
It's not ideal, no, but it's, you know, it's a measure that we can take to try to get parking on the site.
I know what you're saying, but still, and that, here's the situation. There's eight cars. Let's say there's eight cars. One goes to work at 6 o'clock in the morning, one goes about 8:00. And the one that goes to work at 8:00 is blocking the guy out that's going to work at 6:00.
Right.
So the guy gets up at 6:00 and says to the guy, "At 8:00, will you move your car, because I need to get out?"
Mm-hmm.
That's, to me, is really, really not that good. And then you get a lane, your entrances are from the lane. So 20-foot lane, two cars would have a hard time, two cars, a regular car would have a hard time getting by each other.
Well, it's a standard-sized lane. You know, it's a lane that I, for instance, have in my backyard, and regularly, people use it.
I've seen some standard lanes where two cars cannot pass each other.
Right. No, I'm, I mean, there's all sorts of cars. I mean, I don't know. I'm just saying that, you know, this is the city standard.
Can we switch to the rear lot parking, the part that's being discussed?
Yeah, I realize that. You've got eight parking spaces?
Yes.
And you have only three visitor parking spaces for four units.
Mm-hmm.
That'd be hardly unreasonable that you'd ever have only three. Any one of these places could have people for dinner that'd drive more than three cars. Then what do you do with the rest?
Well, I mean, you know, living in a house, most people have, you know, too...
Create a problem in the neighborhood, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yes or no?
Well, she can't answer whether it would create a problem in the neighborhood, but...
Well, you know, we sure can. Why wouldn't she? I mean, the fact is, you know what? I got, I'm building it, four units. I've got eight parking spaces. Now, I have one unit, and I'm going to invite my son-in-laws, and daughter-in-law, and her husband, and her children. They bring their cars. There's four cars, okay? So three of them can park on the street, one of them will have to park somewhere else. And then what about the other units? I mean, sure to God, they're going to have some guests sometimes. So, you know, to me, look, I know you may be thinking I'm poking holes at this, but to me, the neighborhood has to be pretty comfortable with it.
Yeah, I mean, our goal is to provide as much parking as we can, and we started out by providing what was required for that zone, which is one and a half per unit. And so we've looked at ways to try to incorporate more parking onto the site, and, you know, we could look further. This is what we've come up with so far. You know, we had suggestions about moving the garage forward and adding parallel spots to the rear, those kind of things. So in light of that, this is what we felt was a good approach.
And on this one, right here, see? The cars, the two cars on either side are blocking each other.
Yeah, the two tandem stalls. Yeah, yeah, they are. I mean, it's just like, you know, when, if I have a driveway in my house and, you know, a few of us park there, you know, one of us has to move. It's, it's not ideal. It's just a way that people do use informally to accommodate guests.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Actually, I thought you'd handled the parking quite well. The, you didn't have to do the tandem, I don't think. We've visited some sites where this similar configuration takes place, and the seventh and eighth parking space are the ones out front of the property. This one, the ninth, 10th, and 11th parking space are the ones out front of the property. So I don't have a particular issue with that. Now, when you laid it out with, say, two single-family homes, which is allowed, you wouldn't need a rezoning, I don't think, two single-family homes and carriage homes, you'd have four units on the same property, how many parking spaces would you have been required to have then?
Well, other projects that I've designed where we've had carriage homes to the rear and a single-family house in the front, we've been able to fit three parking stalls.
On each side of the...
On each lot. So it would be a total of six.
Six, which is what the bylaw, I think, what does the bylaw require here? Six?
Yes, the bylaw would require two spaces for the single-family dwelling and one for the carriage house. So three per lot, which would be six stalls, under that scenario.
Now, in this scenario, the...
Under this scenario is six stalls as well. It's one and a half per unit.
You've exceeded what's required by the bylaw. I actually, you know, our household does tandem all the time. You know, we've got a teenager, and quite frankly, that car usually arrives home later than me. So I understand how that one works. And I actually thought that the solution was quite, quite successful. I don't have that issue. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you. I too, I'm quite impressed with how you've accommodated the parking, because we also do tandem. So I, in a single family, so I appreciate that. It's a bit of a pain, but you make it work. You find a way to make it work. I have two questions. How far are you away from, how far is this site away from the Evergreen Line and Coquitlam Station? Do you know, or maybe planning?
I do happen to know that. I checked it this morning. It was, it's about 1,200 meters. So it's, as the crow flies, it's about a kilometer. So it's just beyond the 800-meter circle. That's that radius we use, it's just beyond that.
So it's just outside?
Yeah. Direct walking, it's about 1,200 meters or so.
And the other question I have is also for staff. The land use designation is neighborhood attached residential, so can you describe what that typically looks like?
Yes, as you saw in the colored map, which is the OCP, neighborhood attached residential designation allows the RT1 zoning, which is currently in all those lots in that area. RT1 allows duplexes, it allows single-family subdivision in cases like this, as mentioned by the applicant, with carriage houses. It also allows this lot, if it was not subdivided, to have both a carriage house and a suite.
So you could get three?
You can get three or four. Well, currently, you can get three, without subdivision, you can get three units. With subdivision, you can get two units and two carriage houses. The OCP does support rezoning to RT3, which is what this proposal is. And under that scenario, it allows either triplexes or quadraplexes for a lot of this size. And the quadruplex, in fact, is, it's in the larger category of properties, so a quadruplex is permitted.
So a quadruplex would be permitted on this lot?
Yes, and on a number of lots in the area as well. It just depends on the size of the property. If it's a smaller property, it would be, if it's very small, for instance, under RT1, a duplex may be the smallest, or the highest density. As the size goes up, more unit allowance is included in the zone, so they can go up to triplex or quadruplex. Quadruplex is the most you can get under RT3.
And how long has this been the OCP designation for this neighborhood? Do we know?
The OCP designation was adopted with the Southwest Area Plan back, I think it was in 2008. But with the adoption of the NAR designation on these sites, what was done was that the NAR designation followed all the existing RT1 zone properties in the city. And these RT1 zone properties, I believe, date back to the 1950s.
So you could actually build, really, very easily, two houses, each with a suite. And so really, you could have really four families, and this is a different way of doing four families?
That is correct, and that's the approach we've taken in terms of this housing choice palette, is that does reflect in some ways just a slightly different formatting of the same number of families and units on the site.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a speaker's list for item one? Finn Eby. Mr. Eby's at 2618 Auburn Place.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Finn Eby. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed changes in zoning at 761 Miller Avenue. Together with my dad, I own the property at 766 Miller Avenue, which is directly across the street from 761 Miller Avenue. My family has lived at this address since 1960. The homes on our street have yards with fruit trees and vegetable gardens. We have space to put our recreational vehicles, such as boats and campers. Our yards are big enough for swing sets, and in my case, a workshop for hobbies. If changes to 761 Miller Avenue are allowed, this will definitely open the doors for all other properties on our street to be redeveloped to this extreme. The people who want these changes do not live in our neighborhood. I agree that Coquitlam requires future planning, but this planning needs to be in close consultation with the neighbors directly affected. There are many people in the neighborhood of 761 Miller Avenue that do not want this property changed. Future planning is not just a cash grab for a few people, and this is what worries me, what is happening here. The city, the builders, the real estate companies, and others all stand to profit. Existing neighbors lose. In my opinion, allowing any higher-density redevelopment would degrade our neighborhood. Here are my reasons for opposing the redevelopment of 761 Miller Avenue. The loss of green space, with more building square footage allowed, less privacy, with homes being closer to one another, more noise, more traffic and less parking availability on the street, more traffic in narrow laneways, increased use of utilities such as water, sewer, and electrical, more people is potential for higher crime. The development variance permit to allow building closer to the street would make our street look crowded. It will allow other properties on Miller Avenue to be rezoned. It will set a precedence. My neighbor Danny Zell has taken up a petition that reflects the amount of people that live in our direct neighborhood who oppose this rezoning. I have also signed this petition along with my dad. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Councillor Sakura has a question. Counselor Socorro has a question.
Thank you very much, one question. Does your property, do you drive into your property through the lane?
No, sir.
Is there any houses in that block that drive through the lane, that have to use that lane?
The lane which is behind 761?
Yep.
Okay, I do not use 761, I live across the street on, on Miller Avenue, so to the south of it.
Yes, I know, yeah.
And, and so that laneway, I would not be personally using, what my concerns are is very narrow laneway, and we know we had kids in the neighborhood, so safety is a concern, and really, just being tight, it's really difficult to move around. So definitely, my concerns are with crowded laneways.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Reed?
Thank you.
Sir, sir?
No, it's to staff, thank you. Did we not already have one of these quadruplexes in this little catchment area?
We did have one, I just think the first one that was approved by council was on Clark, just, I believe...
On where?
Just further north of this.
I know, I can't remember the name of the street.
It is, it's on Clark, it was just, just on Clark.
No, I thought there was another one as well.
Well, there was one across the street, but that was rejected by council, that was a three-unit project, but...
No, no, there was, there's another one somewhere in this area.
I, I do recall that we have, we have brought through council a four-unit of this typology, I don't think it's in this immediate area, however.
No, no, that's not it, it's okay. Pardon? No, this was not on Clark, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, and Counselor Asmanson.
Just for clarity, Mr. Eby, and I, I think what we're trying to establish here is the zoning which presently, what here is coming to council for rezoning, but what can be put on the property without coming to council for rezoning, so what could be just simply an application given to the city, council would not have a public hearing, there would be no rejection or application of that, so as I get it correct from Mr. Aloueva, that on this property, you could split it into two and have two houses on that property, each one with a legal suite in it, and a potential for a carriage house on the back without coming to council for a rezoning application, that's correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So, just, so I think sometimes when petitions are, are put out by people, they don't have the full breadth of what the issue is. So by having these four units here, these will not allow suites, so you're going to have four units where you could have six units, coming to council for rezoning because it's not part of the present zoning, you understand?
Yes.
Okay?
I do, and I'm simply saying, I'd like to, if, if possible, my first thought would be leave what's there, or build a, a new house, like keep it, the single-family dwellings, I do realize that I call a duplex zone area, and that's what I have seen on Miller Avenue up to now, I've seen duplexes built there, my feeling is there's enough duplexes, we need more homes with backyards.
Okay, I'm, but my point is that if we were to turn this down, the applicant here could simply build?
Yes.
Two single-family homes with suites in them, plus a carriage house above each of the garage, so there would be three units.
Can you do both? You can't do both.
They said there was, did the carriage house be allowed in the zone, or is that a?
The, the proposal that, without, without rezoning, under RT1, you could split this lot into two single-family lots, each could have a single-family dwelling and a carriage house, or a suite.
Or a suite, okay, definitely.
However, however, without subdivision, without subdivision, you could build a single-family home on this size of a lot and have both a suite and a carriage house, so you could, there's multiple options available, but if you subdivide it into two narrow lots, each lot could have a single-family dwelling and a carriage house or a suite, so two...
Okay, when Counselor Robinson asked her, I thought she's, we thought it was all three, but so...
It couldn't be a legal suite, in other words, but you could have a basement.
So basically, you could have two single-family houses with suites in them and have four units or four people living in there.
Yeah.
So, that's just my last question, just to explain that. Through to staff, the other side of the street on Sprawl is, it looks like duplexes have been in there for quite a bit, or is that a recent application? Because that looks like all duplexes along Sprawl on the, the laneway facing it.
I believe it is.
Yeah.
Yep, there's, there's a number.
There are a number of duplexes in the area that I'm familiar with, I couldn't say whether every single one of them is a duplex, but there's quite a number of them.
Okay, so, thank you.
And I actually want, I should make a similar comment, that's one of our challenges, is that your neighborhood is changing, all of our neighborhoods are changing, and when the house gets replaced, it won't be replaced with a house that size, it will typically, what we're, what we're seeing a lot of is the 6,000, 7,000-square-foot house, sometimes bigger than what, the amount of square footage that they're allowed to build here.
Yes, that is nice.
And, and typically with basements, and typically with at least one suite, and sometimes, unfortunately, with more than one suite, and they're very difficult to manage, so one of the challenges that council tackled was how do we figure out how to make our neighborhoods change less, and one of the ways was to make smaller homes, and to make, to allow more of them on the same lot because of that, the financial realities, is that we, we know what's going to happen, it's just going to get torn down, and either a big duplex or a really big single-family home with multiple units inside will get built, we're going to have six to eight cars on the property because it's being redeveloped. We've seen some of the monsters that now have 10, or 12, or 14 cars on it, believe it.
An example of...
And so that's our, that's our challenge, and so we're trying, the zoning was adopted to allow smaller homes, family-oriented housing, on our, our single-family neighborhoods, and so this is, you, you say we'd rather, your, your best bet would be to have the neighborhood not change and to have more single-family homes, our experience is we're running a losing battle on that one.
759 Miller Avenue is a brand-new home, a family lives in there, they'll be speaking here tonight, and they are right beside 761, it's a good example of what I love to see in our neighborhood.
Yeah, fair enough, okay, I'm just, I'm just explaining some of the rationale as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and you mentioned Dan Xiao, who did the petition, he's next, she's next, and that's at 759 Miller.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Dan Xiao, I'm the owner of 759 Miller Avenue. Our house is just beside 761 Miller Avenue, we are strongly against this rezon proposal. Right now, the property located at 761 Miller Avenue is a single house, if it is resumed to RT3, the density would be four times than now, as well as the increase of quantity of cars. We are concerned about the following problems, the first one is the whole picture, Miller Avenue is a duplex and a single-house area, the new four-unit will completely ruin the look and atmosphere in our neighborhood. First, build four standalone houses with six to eight parking lots in one lot, we think is too crowded, each house lot only has 2,750 square feet, and they are too close to each other, it is almost no privacy. Second, from the builder's landscape plan, you can see there is almost no green land, they will also remove all of now existing trees, we understand that the builders would like to maximize their profit, but we believe a green and comfortable environment is more important to our neighborhood. Third, the builder wanted to build one unit to be 1.6 meter closer to the road, right now, all the houses on the north side of Miller Avenue is 3.6 meter to the road, this change is not consistent with any other properties on our street, it will ruin the look of our street. Fourth, if this fourth new house are built, it will set an example of what other existing properties on Miller Avenue would look like in the future. Right now, we have a green Miller Avenue, each house has grassland, backyard, trees, and flowers around, we understand that Coquitlam is a city who always respect our natural environment, we don't think our council wanted to see a green Miller Avenue, only for small houses, garages, and roads, this is totally against our city's culture and heritage. Fifth, we also worry about the second unit in each new house, even then, right now, a lot of new houses build a second unit for renting income, even they are not the legal unit, we are worried that these four new houses will be, end up with eight families living in them, it means that the density will be eight times more than now. We also concern about our privacy, if new four, if new four houses is built, we would totally lose our privacy, please imagine if your neighbor built two new houses in their backyard, which is just beside yours, how much privacy you will have, no matter what kind of fancy they will, what kind of fence they will provide, our backyard is still explored under, under those two new houses. Also, traffic and parking are also problems, need our attention, right now, Miller Avenue is already a very busy road, we don't think it can afford more traffic loud and can provide more parking spots on the street, bring more people and cars to this area will definitely increase the risk of incident and crime in our neighborhood. Based on the above concern, we believe that at this current time, Miller Avenue already has enough density, enough cars, and enough traffic, we don't think this area can afford more density, this proposal does not fit into our neighborhood at all, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, I actually just have some questions for staff that relate to some of the things that you, you've mentioned in here, so I just wanted just to clarify a few things.
Yes.
So do we have any evidence that when we have higher density, that we have higher crime in a neighborhood?
My knowledge of, of density and what does the neighborhoods is, does not correlate to crime, and other factors would relate to crime, but I, we've never seen any evidence of that.
So, okay, that, that's helpful, the other question I had has to do with the fact that there's some concern about privacy, so if, if the owner chose to build what we gently call a monster house, right, using up as much of the, of the floor plate of the, the land as possible, would it be the same in terms of building, in terms of how close it would be to the next, to the neighbors, is this different?
It, it is no different, through your, through the chair, the, the side yard setback is the same for single-family, RS1, RT1, or RT3, 1.8 meters, however, under this scenario, because it goes through a development permit, we can control window placement, you know, privacy windows, there's some design that we can control, which we could not under a single-family home redevelopment.
So that's really interesting, so if, if the owner instead chose to build a very large house with a suite and a, and a coach house, let's say, they would have, and I'll possibly, similar enough, similar number of cars, they may not require the same amount of parking, actually would be less parking, and we wouldn't be able to dictate at all making sure that they had privacy screens or that they placed windows, that actually, the things that this woman is worried about are better served in terms of this proposal, because we actually have a say, and we could hear from them that privacy is a concern, and we can make sure that window placements, et cetera, are accommodated accordingly, is that right?
Yes, we don't have any controls on the design of a single-family dwelling, whereas with this process, the development permit does have to go through staff, and privacy and overlook is an issue we can deal with as part of the design.
So is that something that we will be able to, that we're prepared to look at, given some of the concerns we're hearing so far?
Through the chair, we have discussed the matter already with the designer, and they've already presented a reasonable plan in terms of high windows, very few windows on those elevations, there are privacy windows because they're, they're higher, they can be frosted, so there's elements we will continue to look at, to ensure overlook and privacy are addressed.
That's great, thank you very much.
Yeah, can I speak a few words regarding the this council's question?
Not normally, but go ahead, right now.
Yeah, the first one is, I think if more cars parking on the street, it's common sense is have the high chance to the car break in, that's the normal sense, I think.
Doesn't work that way.
So how many cars breaking happen on the street, I think it's the...
That's not, that's not what the data says, but that's...
It's actually the reverse, and that was going to be, my question was going to be, well, not really a question, because we know the, the monster house built six feet from the property line can be, can have a deck 20 feet above the air looking right into people's backyards, and we can't control that at all, whereas we can, if we allow a development like this, we can make it so that exactly what's presented on the plans is approved, and if it's, if there's some concern about it, if you don't approve it, we, we do something else. And so, with duplex, are we able to regulate the design on duplex, and I know the answer to that one, too.
With duplex, your worship, yes, we have, we have some design with, the duplex does go through a development permit process through staff, it's staff-delegated, there is a, there is a design process. With, with duplex, however, there's, it's easier to fit the, a duplex on the property, we, we're not constantly looking for privacy as the issue, because there's just two units, it's pretty standard development form, so the design guidelines are not as detailed when it comes to overlook and privacy in a, in a duplex format, but we do look for higher-quality design in duplexes.
Yeah, and obviously, in the case of a subdivision to two single-families, we're back to the other situation.
Yeah, single-family subdivision has no design control, aside from the, just basic zoning elements in the bylaw.
So that was, the explanation was, we're, we're prepared to listen to concerns, the reality is that oversight into your backyard is more likely in a single-family home than in this home, so there may be other issues you have, but oversight isn't typically one of them, breaking into cars actually goes down when there's more cars in the street than when there's fewer, but that's, but in any case, thank you very much.
Okay.
Oh, Counselor Nicholson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, your worship, I actually have some questions for this lady.
Dan, would you mind stepping forward again? Hate to do that.
We try to make sure everybody gets as much exercise as possible. So I, I want to be clear, Ms. Mann, the proponent, began this, this process by telling us some of the ways in which she addressed some of the concerns that she had already heard from some of the neighbors. In the letter that we were just handed, you talk about your concern about second units in each house.
Yeah.
And that, but she showed us the floor plans, which made it pretty clear to me that it would be very difficult to put a secondary suite, and Counselor Socorro addressed her pretty firmly about that possibility, it seems to me that it's very unlikely that anyone could fit a suite.
Yeah, but I think the problem is right now, a lot of people also build the second unit to rent out, even it's not a legal one, you know, even some duplex, they had, they, they built the second unit, and even without the kitchen, they still can rent out, and even a very small kitchen, so it can still rent out, I'm not talking about the legal suite, you know, most, you, and you can see, the problem is, they want to build four new houses, and how much they want to sell this new house, that's the point, if they want to sell it $200,000, yes, they don't need the second unit to rent out, but I don't think they will sell it as $2,000, $200,000, right? If they sold over $700,000, $800,000, I think it's the trend, is that they have to be the second unit, no matter it's legal or not legal, to rent out, to support the mortgage, that's the situation, and that's the, I think the most situation we has to face, right? That's my point, yeah.
So are you suggesting to me that there are a number of illegal suites in your neighborhood?
I didn't suggest anything, I just say, in the Coquitlam, many people built the second unit to rent out, no matter it's legal or not legal, that's the point, yeah.
And this council and our planning staff concern themselves a great deal about the possibility of houses being designed so as to support illegal suites, and I think the proponent and our planning staff have addressed that, but none of us have made up our minds yet, and we'll carry on with the public hearing, thank you.
Counselor Socorro.
Yeah, thank you very much, I think, I think that our politicians in here around the table are all off-base, number one, we're not talking about monster... Number one, we're not talking about monster houses. This is not what's before us. There's certainly not before us houses with suites and cottages at the back. These, it's, it's not before us, so we keep discussing this. We keep to throw and fright into the people of what can happen with that property. And, and I'm sorry, you're all out of order on that. That should not be discussed.
Well, actually...
Because that's what's before us. But I, but now that we mentioned monster houses, I served a notice of motion about six months ago on monster houses, because a lot of complaints...
Well, this isn't about monster houses. I'm not sure we can discuss that.
And it was passed unanimously by this council. When is a report coming on our monster houses? So give me an answer, maybe the next council, not tonight, not tonight.
Counselor, Counselor Sikora, you began the argument saying, "We're not allowed to discuss monster houses," and then you posed the question about monster houses.
Because, because, you know what, and I said, "I don't need an answer tonight. I don't want to answer tonight."
You won't get one.
But I hope to hear before Christmas, maybe, of what's happening. But we're all out of order when you start talking about houses with basement suites and cottage houses that they can have. It's not what's before us. Before us is four houses, period, with parking, with driveways through the lane. That's what we should be talking about, period. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Sikora, I take your point of order, but I, I, I won't be able to accept it because the, this, uh, a number of the, this comments have already been raised about this being an increase in density or this being more units than would otherwise be permitted. And several council members have said, "Well, actually, it isn't more units than would be permitted. They could build more units on there now, uh, without a, without going to this rezoning than otherwise." So that was the, I think that was the discussion, what was the discussion was about, that with a, that they could build a monster house...
I understand, Mayor, but it's not what's before us. You said it in your speech, speak to the issue.
And the issue was increasing density and the counselor argued that, "Well, actually, it would still be four units." So, um, I, I, I'm gonna have to rule that the point of order wasn't founded, but I thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you can't, I'm sorry, this, if you do want to take the microphone as soon as we get to the, right now, we have a, a speaker's list. You will, you will be able to take the microphone. I've got, oh dear, Praveez Ahmed. Am I close?
My name is Praveez Ahmed. I'm resident of 755 Miller Avenue. Uh, actually, I would like, uh, to support this project. Uh, I believe, uh, this is the only way we go forward for affordable housing and this will bring new and fresh development and replacing the old structure in our areas. Uh, that makes me sometime wonder if they could bear the earthquake shocks. I think soon we should be ready to say welcome to some more neighbors. We would be invited, that would be invited by fast commuting system in our area that is around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Your address was...
Pardon me?
Seven, okay, I'm sorry, you're right, it is. Okay, so you're, you're two doors, three doors down from the subject property, okay. And you're in favor of the...
Actually, sorry.
You're, you're supportive of...
Yeah, I'm supporting that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, next speaker is Farshid Rafaiye. And Farshid is at 925 Grant, which is around the corner. Up the road, six houses, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Farshid Rafi and I'm, and I'm a registered architect with AIBC and I'm a neighbor at 925 Grant Street, um, very close to this neighborhood. I would like to, uh, first of all, say thank you to, uh, to staff to, to come up with such an innovative way to, uh, to challenge those big monster houses, as you mentioned. It's really an issue to have those monster houses in our area. It's allowed and, um, it's bringing four family in the, in, under one roof. Uh, one tax is paid to the city and we see, uh, enormous of cars parked in the front of the building. Uh, we feel that this is really a good, uh, good way of dealing with the, with our neighborhood that is changing. Evergreen Line is coming with your hard work and, uh, uh, we are in the close proximity, proximally to Evergreen Line Station, walking distance. So we are really excited to see, uh, projects like this is happening in our neighborhood. Uh, more affordable housing are coming, is more, um, is, is, uh, bringing more young families to our neighborhood. Uh, and we feel that, uh, we are also at a cross proximally to SFU and, and a school, that this is a, uh, this can organize the, uh, our old houses in the neighborhood. Lots of our, uh, the houses in our neighborhood are old and the econ- the economic doesn't support the big giant houses unless they put a couple of illegal suites. So I'm in favor of, uh, this application and, uh, and with a couple of other neighbors that I think, I believe they sent support, uh, emails, uh, through the clerk and, uh, hopefully we'll get your support.
Thank you. Do you have, do you live on a street with a back lane?
No, um, 925 Grant Street, on a Grant Street.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's it for our speaker's list. Are there any other speakers to this item? That would be the time. The protocol will be to ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Mayor, Council, uh, my name is Bobok Mirovich. I live in, on Miller Avenue, 817 Miller. And, uh, uh, lady, my neighbor, she approached me the other day. Uh, that was the first time I heard about this proposal, which I'm, uh, definitely against. First of all, uh, I agree with the previous speakers who talked about, uh, higher density, about, uh, traffic, which is now, no one mentioned, uh, that there are two schools nearby in the morning and in the afternoon, when, when people are taking kids and bringing them home, uh, the traffic is, is tremendous. Uh, in, uh, like, lots of kids are walking to school by their older brothers or sisters. So, uh, the, the road is pretty busy at that time. Uh, from Grant to Miller, there is a constant traffic, the whole day. And, uh, the, can you please put that, uh, uh, traffic, street, uh, proposal, uh, parking, sorry?
The one with 16 spaces or something on the front there.
Even now, uh, without those additional units, yeah, uh, when cars are parked on, like, on the other side, uh, opposite from the proposed, uh, buildings...
The bottom would be south, the south side?
Yeah, yeah, south side.
Okay, yep.
Uh, two cars, uh, have to, to be careful to pass each other. If proposal says that it will be eight to nine parallel parkings, there is no way that two cars can pass by. One will have to wait, especially if those parallel, uh, parallel parkings, like, if the cars were taking one of them, they have to back up and, uh, it's gonna be the whole mess. And I know that for a fact, because I live there. So, uh, especially with the, those kids, which no one mentioned, uh, it, it, it will be pretty bad. And, uh, another thing, uh, like, you saw that plan, uh, that is, uh, single room or or duplex, uh, lots. And if we make now exemption, pretty soon you will be dealing with more and more requests for rezoning and making more of, of those four units on each lot. And I, I don't know about the gentleman who spoke, uh, before me, but, uh, maybe some of them already have that in mind, that's why they, they are for that, in favor of that plan. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Counselor Hodge.
I have just a, a question, sir. Just, um, on, on this, actually, I'm gonna go, yeah, I have to, I have to have you at the mic, sorry. Um, I'm just looking first at the, the satellite map of that area and you mentioned two schools. One, I guess, I guess you're counting...
Middle school and elementary.
They're both on the same property, so the one, the one site, Bantin...
They're south from, from that area.
Right.
But people are, are like, taking kids to school, uh, walking, uh, on Grant and Miller. And it's very busy.
Do they come, I could, I could see Robinson, do they come in on the, on the back or... So they, they come, they use Miller to get to the school, is that it, or is it just the local traffic?
Miller and Grant, uh, they're coming, most of them are coming, uh, from Grant, Miller, or just Miller and they go to Adirond.
Right.
Through Adirond to the schools.
Is there an access off of Adirond? Is there a back lane or a school access point?
Walk, there's a walk.
There's a walkway? Okay, gotcha, okay, okay, that makes sense.
Some of them, they park car on Ad- uh, on Adirond or Miller.
Okay.
And then walk to...
And then walk through and cut through at the back into the school, okay?
Yeah. There's no sidewalk, yeah, that's true.
But they, they cut through. Now, the other thing is, I guess, looking at the, the proposed parking here, uh, and you're right, if, there's currently parking on both sides of Miller right now. Uh, so I guess depending where cars park, uh, you would still have the same issue that two cars can't park, pass if there's cars parked on both sides of the road. Is that correct?
Yes, partially.
Yes.
Uh, right now, on the north side, uh, most of those houses, they have a driveway.
Right.
And the driveway is, uh, wide enough to fit the cars. So on the north side, it's not that busy as it's on the, on the, the, the south side. But with this proposal, it, it's gonna be even, even worse.
Right, and I guess we talked earlier about, you know, monster houses and other things, and I guess the one thing that I do see in this proposal is the number of off-site, pardon, I guess onsite, there's a number of, right, on the site. We saw the four plus the two tandem, so there were eight on the site. But I guess conceivably, if somebody were to go and build, uh, an, under existing zoning, they could build the f- single family home and just put the one driveway in, so you would still have the homes on the street. And I noticed when I drove down your street today, that there are a lot of new homes, some that have been built further down. Are they all parking on the street and on their property, or are you finding more cars on the street anyway? I'm just wondering if existing homes are, are starting to, if this is a trend that you see.
They're not that many. Uh, there are two, uh, two duplexes at the beginning of Miller.
Yeah.
They have their own driveway and garage.
Right. Do they have, I can't remember, do they have two separate driveways or do they park tandem, one behind the other?
Uh, no, one, one has a, a driveway on, on a back, uh, side, back line, back lane.
Okay.
And the other one, uh, I think that one parks on the street.
Right, okay, okay.
As far as I know.
Good, okay, now I'm just trying to get a sort of a sense of what it's like now. Okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay. Uh, so just to be clear here, um, this isn't a statement of where cars from this property will park. This is something that our staff typically asks applicants for, is can you show us where there is street parking? Show us what the availability of street parking. So, um, where the people in the room might be looking at, the more red boxes, the worse. Council's looking at it, the more red boxes, the better, because that's places to, to park in. That's not necessarily spaces that this particular unit will park in. Um, so they may use street parking, but they may not. And if it were a single family home, it might use street parking and it might not, so...
Yeah, but the, uh, single family home would have probably driveway.
Yes, but they, but they would be required to have two spaces. The city would require them to have two spaces. So if they had a s- visitors or suites or whatever, they're gonna end up with street parking. Most, most of the single family homes in my neighborhood use street parking, so I, I, I understand that. I'm just saying that...
This one comes when it's hot.
Whatever happens, there will be people parking on the street.
Yeah, but in, in, in this case, uh, they don't have any driveway, so all the cars would be parked on the street, right? With four units, quadplex.
They'd provide eight.
They don't have, they don't have driveway.
They have...
Neither one.
Which ones?
Like the, the proposed, uh, rezoning, four units.
Yes.
They wouldn't have their own driveway.
Well, they, they have eight, eight cars in the back.
Yep.
I don't know, that, that, that back lane is very narrow. As far, I'm not an architect, I'm not a, uh, builder and, and I don't know, but it looks very narrow.
Let's ask, Mr. Alaba.
Just, just need to dispel, the, there's various, there's two types of lanes the city has, a standard six meter lane, typically a 4.5 to 4.7 meter drive aisle, or a primary access lane, typically parallel to an arterial road. And this one is just a standard six meter lane, but we, the standard six meter lane can accommodate turning movements, parallel turning movements for all vehicles, um, that we are aware of, based on the bylaw. So we, we do not consider this scenario a substandard lane. Uh, from all information we have from the applicant and the amount of space on that lane, there would be no issue getting cars into those stalls.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you good, Counselor Hodge?
Yep, that was, that was good, and you, you helped to clarify where I was going with this, is that, uh, existing homes are also using the street as they expand, so that was good information, thank you.
Okay, reset that. Any other speakers? There was one there, please, sir.
My name is Ward, Ward Ebby. I have lived in, at 766 Miller Avenue for 54 years and we've gotten used to the development of duplexes and we've enjoyed a friendly, family neighborhood all during that time. And I am concerned with all those points that have been made tonight. Couple of things have not been mentioned. The traffic that comes along Miller Avenue not only comes back and forth from Miller, but comes from the apartments at the end of Grant Street, which regularly use Grant, Miller Avenue as an, uh, exit to Robinson. And the schoolchildren do the same thing and the traffic goes around Miller Avenue onto Ad Iron, so it's a, a very busy street. And that's the, the thing that concerns me with the traffic and the, and the parking, of course, but the other thing that has been mentioned is the four units without any kind of basement, and I'm not talking about basement suites, I'm talking about space to put stuff that people accumulate over the years, as I've watched my own neighbors come and they look for places to put bicycles and motorcycles and boats and baby buggies and everything else. And when you have houses that close together, it's inevitable, eventually you're going to get a junky neighborhood, it seems to be. And if you get that together with rental, and the neighborhood will be considerably changed and not for the better. We are presently quite pleased with the neighbors we have. We all get along well together and I think it's because we have not been, uh, jammed in together with the high density that is being proposed here. And I think that is one of the things I would, uh, hate to see happened, for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ebby. Are there any other speakers to this item? I saw one there, sir.
Good evening, my name is Joe Chula. I'm a resident, uh, on Robinson Street, very close by. Uh, my family and I have lived in the area for over 18 years now, um, very familiar with the area. We walk every second evening. Um, I am for the development that is being proposed tonight. Um, I believe it's a very creative way of developing a property versus the typical monster homes that go up in the neighborhood. We're moving fiercely into the 21st century and we need affordable housing for family and this is a great way of doing it and maximizing the potential of having these affordable units on one lot, keeping in mind that we have the Skytrain station coming very close by. We have, um, heard many times this evening, concerns about... We have heard many times this evening concerns about parking. I think the designer has come up with an excellent solution to that with eight parking stalls. There were concerns raised about tandem parking. I don't think I've ever lived in a, in a house that did not have tandem parking, I can't see that being a concern at all. The developer, the designer stated that they would be putting sidewalk in as part of the development. I'm gonna ask, is that a standard thing that the city is asking for now?
In my opinion, unfortunately so.
Yes, I know the question came up, yes, through the chair, all projects, all rezonings under RT3, under the housing choices, duplexes, triplexes, quadrplexes, all have to undertake frontage improvements, so curb, gutter, sidewalks, streetlights, and that's how the majority of the local services, the renewal of those local services would be established through that process, so that would be part of the, the benefit to the community.
That's only for the RT3, so if they were to build a single-family monster home there, they would not be required to put a sidewalk in?
No, not under a single-family dwelling, only under a duplex.
So I'd just like to raise the point that this is beneficial for the entire neighborhood if more of these developments happen in this area. A concern with us going for our evening walks is the fact that there is no sidewalk on the north or side, south, the south side of Miller, and we're forced to walk on the traffic, or in the traffic, dodging around the cars parked on that side. So if we saw more developments like this, it would help that situation out quite a bit. Back to the, the issues with the parking. Living in a complex, in a strata complex like this, I prefer, as myself, I, I would definitely park in the back lane, in the parking assigned to my strata unit, and that's the way I would see that, and I'd see the front of the house being used for visitors, which predominantly would be empty, and when visitors come, would be, would be parked during that time. So I, I don't see an issue with the parking being any more or less with whatever they would develop. There was a point raised about too many houses on one lot, and people storing boats, and storing, was quoted, making it a junkier neighborhood. I've lived in strata complexes in Por Moody, and strata bylaws are very, very strict. You cannot store anything on common area. When you have a proposal like this with four units in one designated area, you can only store your items within your unit or those designated storage facilities. You are not allowed to store in common areas, which would be walkways and on the side of the house, so if anything, this would beautify the neighborhood. Thank you. Any questions?
Counselor Sikora.
Yeah, thank you. The one mentioned was that no sidewalks. The one thing that, in single-family dwelling, you either put in the sidewalks or you put up a bond for sidewalks.
Mr. Alaweva.
Your worship, no, that's not correct, a single-family dwelling does not need to do frontage services.
Okay, so then you're telling me that we're gonna have the same problem in, in this day, like we had years ago, where there's many houses without sidewalks?
Your worship, what occurred years ago, it was prior to my time, but it was, it was security bonds taken, performance securities for frontage works, those were essentially have, they had to be returned, they were cash in lieu of frontage services, so those were eventually returned to the developers because of, there was a challenge to that. Since then, the bylaw, the building bylaw was amended to not require frontage services for a single-family house replacement. Single-family home areas, typically their frontage services are redone under a capital program that the city undertakes through either local improvement or a normal capital planning process.
So, so years ago, I, I remember that, is the fact is, you took in the bonding, didn't put the sidewalks in, and the people took it to court and won the case, you return them the money plus the interest. I know that, and that's precisely correct. We should have put the sidewalks in, but we didn't. But I can't understand that today, that is somehow different, that we do not collect a bond or force them to put in a sidewalk. Then you're gonna go to a local improvement, where you're gonna have the residents pay for those sidewalks, all the residents are gonna pay for those sidewalks, which is silly. I mean, you know, I'm sorry, but you know what, the first time I'm hearing is something like this today. It just, it just doesn't wash, as far as I'm concerned, thank you.
But this validates my point even more, that with the R3 zoning, you're now forced to build the sidewalk no matter what. It's a requirement, so with this proposal, they would have to build the sidewalk.
Yes, but not with a single-family home.
So we should be in favor.
Okay. When, when did it come about that we stopped collecting a deposit related to that?
Many years ago, your worship. The, the security bond, that was probably over 10 years ago. Maybe not quite 10 years, but since then, there, a single-family home replacement, typically, you've got a single-family home on the property already, say, an existing driveway, the rebuilding of that home typically does not incur a kind of additional infrastructure like frontage services. Keep in mind, many single-family areas have curb and gutter, have an existing sidewalk, typically to the older standard, many do not need replacing these, that infrastructure. But in areas that do not have a sidewalk, for instance, just a curb, in those cases, we would not be able to require additional infrastructure under the, the building requirements, works and services for a, a single-family home replacement.
One more question, Northeast Coquitlam, every house, every house has a sidewalk in front of them. So I go in Northeast Coquitlam, I'm gonna build a house, I don't have to put a sidewalk in front of it, do I?
Miller doesn't have any sidewalks at all.
That's an entirely--
No, hold it, hold it.
Your worship, that's, it's an entirely different situation. The northeast, there's, there's very, there's a number of older, larger parcels, rural parcels in the northeast. The subdivision of those parcels requires all lots to have all subdivision standards applied to them. This is an existing single-family home that exists in the southwest, it's a very different process, because there's no subdivision approvals, it's strictly a building permit for a whole, single-family home replacement.
You know what, you're not answering the question. I'm saying, I've got a single lot, let's say in Northeast Coquitlam, I'm gonna build a house on it, okay? In the middle of a block, that there's all kinds of sidewalks on either side of me. Do I have to build a sidewalk or put up a bonding or not?
Assuming it's not a, assuming it's a street that's 20 years old, and there's a row of homes, some with sidewalks. Mr. McIntyre.
If I could, your worship, Counselor Sikora is correct in, in certain circumstances in the northeast. Let me give you an example. You go up Highland Drive, East Coast Meridian, up in the old, it was the executive residential subdivision up there. A road, probably eight and a half meters wide, and there's a curb and gutter, but no sidewalks, and that's the way it was built at that time. People moving into the newer neighborhoods in, in the northeast, you go down the hill like off of David Avenue, Coast Meridian, the lots all these days, as, as Roels explained, because they're going through a subdivision process, they are required, the developer has to put in those frontage improvements, which include curb and gutters, sidewalks, street trees, and, and the streetlights, so.
That's, that's in subdivision areas. I'm talking about where somebody is putting in 13, 14, 20 houses. I'm talking about a block, and you know, this should be very easy to answer. Let's say in the middle of a block, where there, there's built on either side, there's sidewalks, some of these subdivided, put sidewalks. I'm in the middle of a block, I got that one lot, I'm gonna build a house. Am I gonna have to put the sidewalk in and, or put up bonding, or just walk away from it?
You are not required to, the bylaw does not require a single-family home replacement anywhere in the city to provide a sidewalk. The bylaw cannot apply, but what we are getting is those homes, those properties subdividing. We're getting very few single-family house replacements in the northeast.
Well, I've given you a bit of latitude, because we're not on that subject, we're on the subject here, but--
Sidewalks.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any other speakers to this item? I'm gonna ask a third and final time, are there any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, Counselor Nicholson has a question of the proponent. Now, the proponent doesn't have to come back up again, but it's usually in the best interest. We can't compel witnesses, but--
She enjoyed herself so much the last-- So one of the, one of the features in the application, and one that's been mentioned by some of the people here tonight, in their writing, if not in their speaking, is the 1.6 meter variance on setback, which, according to my staff report, is intended to vary the frontage a little, break it up, make it a little more pleasant to look at. And I look at the drawing, and I don't see any other reason for it, and I guess my question for you is, if we were not to allow you that variance, would it change your plan to go ahead?
Oh, no, not at all. Originally, we had proposed, you know--
A flat front?
Yes, a consistent front, and then it was, I just felt that it was, it would be more attractive to kind of stagger them a little bit, so it wasn't so monotonous, and also to increase the space between the buildings to allow more light, and more plants, and so on. So, you know, we, we thought it was a good idea, but our, our project works perfectly fine without it. But we think it's nice for the street and for the proposal.
Thank you.
Okay. Already asked a third and final time, we'll ask one last third and final time. Any other speakers to this item? Any others, any others? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Madam Kirk.
Item two is an application to amend the city's--
Actually, I'll, I'll do this. There were a bunch of you who were here for just that item. We will be convening a public council meeting, and I suspect dealing with that item, and that's in, well, whenever the next two items are finished. Okay, you can stay if you like.
Item two is an application to amend the city's zoning bylaw to rezone the properties at 1423, 1435, 1445, and 1455 Dayton Street, from RS2 one-family suburban residential to RS7 small village, single-family residential, RS8 large village, single-family, and P5 special park, bylaw number 4396.
Good evening again. The site, site of this rezoning application is on the east side of Dayton Street, north of Highland. The site is designated under the city's official community plan, small village, single-family on the western half, and large village, single-family on the eastern half of the site. Zoning on the site and to the south and east is RS2 suburban residential, zoning to the west is RT2 townhouse residential, P5 special park, and RS7 small village, single-family residential, and to the north, P5 special park. Currently, there are four single-family dwellings located on the existing four lots. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site to RS7, single village, small village, single-family residential, RS8 large village, single-family residential, and P5 special park to facilitate subdivision of 33 single-family lots, a streamside protection area, and a pedestrian walkway. The Smiling Creek Neighborhood Pedestrian Network Plan has identified several public pathways and trails around the site, including one directly west connecting Dayton to a to-be-named cul-de-sac street, and several pathways are designated within the Harper site, Harper Park site to the north. The subdivision application associated with the rezoning would secure an additional pathway across the northwestern portion of the site, ensuring a connected trail system from Coast Meridian eastward to Harper Park and beyond. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning bylaw number 4396. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Asmussen with a question.
Just through the staff, Dayton Street in this area, this is going to be part of the collector vote for Dayton Sobal? From Highland Drive down?
My, my recollection is that it's, it is a collector standard, but I will have to double-check that.
Because I, I know Sobal Dayton from Highland is to be that, north-south, and there, with that collector, there'll be enough room for parking either side of the street?
Yes, yes, there, there will be parking on, on Dayton, yes.
Okay.
On-street parking.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, I have, I have two questions. One, would you mind putting the pedestrian one back up, just so we can get a, it wasn't up long enough to actually see how it would fit, so that's, that's very helpful. And I have a question about the temporary lane connection proposed to Argyle Street. How long is temporary?
Your worship, it would be until the phase two completes, and then the actual ultimate connection back out to Argyle is completed, then we would release that, that temporary access.
So I guess one of the concerns I have with temporary is that people think that it's permanent, even when it's temporary, because a temporary could be two years. And so I think, well, when we debate it, I just wanted to just get a sense of what temporary meant. Is that accurate, like it could be a couple of years, temporary could be a couple of years?
Yes, it, it usually doesn't take that long, it would be, there would be two phases of subdivision, so the first phase would have to ensure that there's a, you know, proper access and egress, so that, that, that temporary linkage typically, it's, you can usually tell it's temporary, it's, it's not finished to a final standard, it's a, typically, it's the lift, the asphalt lift, it's, it's functional, we could put up a sign. So those are things that we are looking to in terms of our signage program, to ensure that people know that's temporary, that it'll be extended to the north and back out to Argyle in the future.
Thank you.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Janet Klopp of 3440 Highland Drive, which is the property directly south across Highland Drive from this property. Property currently under discussion. I received a letter notifying my husband Rick and I of this application in the mail less than two weeks ago, after hours on Tuesday, May 14th, and to my surprise, I had trouble accessing City Hall to make my inquiries, so I hope you'll bear with me a little bit this evening. This was due to the fact that my work started at 8:30 in the morning at middle schools I worked at the past two weeks, and after preparing for the next day, I didn't leave them until 4:15, so I couldn't get to the planning department to, to ask my questions. And as the schools were across town, it just wasn't gonna leave enough town, time. I'm concerned sometimes about the timeframes about these things, especially coming into the summer, when a lot of us are really busy with, with plans. One thing and another, I couldn't, it was to my great surprise, I couldn't even make a phone call last Friday, it was to my great surprise, I could make a phone call last Friday, Mr. Hawkins, and I certainly don't fault him for not having enough time to call me back, he did today, but I was at work. So I'd like to suggest that we have extended hours at the planning department counter one evening during the week, even if it were only until 7:00 PM. When I brought this up with my husband, who, as you know, is a contractor in our city, he said his planning, his draftsman had trouble accessing, and apparently this idea works well in Burnaby, so it would probably be a good idea. I'm sure I'm not the first person that's run into this inaccessibility. So by its own admission, planning department personnel and city council have admitted there have been some mistakes made in some of the decisions for planning on Burke Mountain. I believe that now that we are aware of some of the problems, there should be some attempts to remedy them, and this is a, this rezoning application seems as good a time as any to address some citizens' concerns. I do not per se oppose this rezoning application, but I have some questions I'd like publicly answered for everyone to hear, and some things I'd like considered. The first of my concerns would be parking on Dayton Street. We already have parking spilling into our neighborhood from Horizon Drive above, which has next to no on-street parking. A neighbor from Highland recently moved on to Horizon Drive and is lamenting that he cannot park in front of his own home due to his neighbors using that space because their household has four cars. He has no room for guests to park. I would like to know, will this Dayton Street proposal have a laneway between the RS7 homes and the RS8 homes? If so, could that same laneway facilitate the RS8 homes having their garages at the back of their homes too, rather than fronting on Argyle? I think this should be considered, because it would allow the whole road frontage on both streets for on-street parking. Compared to the homes above, it would be added value and a huge selling point. At the very least, homes with driveways onto the streets should have them configured side-by-side as much as possible to allow larger usable space for on-street parking. Am I able to get that question answered this evening?
Yep.
There have been some questions asked, so--
And that's fine, if you pause, and we'll, we'll be able to redirect a question to staff.
I will pause.
Okay. Does anyone have a, I may have spoken too soon, maybe they don't have an answer for that.
Would we be seeing a laneway between the RS7 and RS8? And where is the temporary-- And where is the temporary laneway that was spoken of, please, that was going to Argyle specifically?
Your worship, the, the lane is, runs north-south from Highland down below. And basically, the zoning is, is split east-west, so the lane is there. The temporary lane and I believe it's that shaded area about halfway up, because it's, subdivision is being done in phases. The, the southern block, and that's the lots you see clearly in this attachment three, and then you see the, the lots to the north in a, in a dashed line, that would be the phase two. So to complete the lane access out to Argyle, there'd be a temporary lane access there, that shaded area?
So which is considered phase one and which is considered phase two? RS7 is phase one or?
No, it's half and half. There's, because the lots on the, the west side on the.
The south side?
On, on Dayton. So it's both north-south and east-west here, if you bear with us.
The south property is phase one, the north is, is phase two?
Okay, so closer to.
Then both of them are split in half by.
Okay, oh, so right across that, that serrated line or?
Yes.
Broken line, okay. All right. Thank you. Where will services go? Where are services proposed, please? They're a long way from services right now for sewage and storm sewer. Are those going to go right down Highland Drive?
Yes, I believe that they're, they're aware that there's an, I think that our, the report does cover the fact that there is some additional requirements for servicing from Coast Meridian along Highland, and it has to be approved through the development further to the west. So once that's available, then this development can then provide the service back up. So they are aware that those services are yet unconstructed and we can't provide final approval until those are actually committed.
Thank you. Okay, so I was wondering about the RS7 small village, single-family homes. Is it possible that they can have attached garages? I'm hoping that that's possible because I think the detached garages deter people from parking in them because they can park on the street in front of their homes and be much closer to their front doors when they have to move their goods through the rain from the car to inside. We've seen in Belmont subdivision in some cases, not only do the homeowners have to run through the rain, but they are another whole level down from their main floors, whereas their main floors, for the most part, are at street level. So if the garages were attached, the homes could also allow parking of a vehicle on their own property directly in line with the garage, rather than beside it, so they can enjoy a bigger usable space in their backyard. I know that before they had, that I had the use of my garage, I used to hate having to run through the rain to get my young children groceries into the house. And as I've told you many times, it rains wet up at our place. When it's not raining at yours, it really rains hard up there. So is it possible that we can have attached garages on the small village, single-family homes?
Mr. McIntyre.
And then opening up the whole street for on-street parking, not having any, any driveways onto Dayton at all along that development? I'm just wondering if it can be a consideration on.
Well, the, there is some provision for attached garages for RS7. These are the small village. We don't see them very much because there's some very, there's some difficulties in achieving the minimum lot size and lot width and lot depth in achieving an attached garage. So we don't see them very often. Typically, we get the rear garage. The RS8s, on the other hand, are wide enough to accommodate front access.
Yeah, well, they're also, the RS8s are usually the garages built into the home. I'm suggesting that these homes, these garages would sort of be attached to the homes so that people aren't having to run through the weather to unload their cars. And they, it might, it might encourage them to use their garages instead of the street.
The, the option is in the bylaw. Again, the developer is here. Perhaps he could discuss what his interest is in his marketing.
Fair enough.
And whether he's prepared to do that. We would grant the proponent the opportunities under the bylaw. At this point, we hadn't heard of any issue of that nature.
I would think that if he could provide the most parking on the street, that his homes would be very popular as opposed to those on Horizon Drive. Because we, we, as you know, we talk to our neighbors up there and some of them are very unhappy. So will the ditch on Dayton and the portion of the ditch on Highland become part of the storm sewer system?
The, this is the ditch fronting the development on the east side?
Well, yeah, it's on the west side. On Dayton, it goes right down on the west side of this proposal and halfway from where the lane is, say, west.
So the, the.
Those west.
The properties immediately to the, to the west are under the Polygon application?
No, I'm just talking on their side, though, on the developer's side.
Talking about on the east side of.
There's currently a ditch there.
Yeah, so all of the frontages along Dayton will actually be improved, including, now I don't believe there's any red-coated, I think that's just a storm.
I'm just confirming, I believe that's true as well.
Yeah, so that would be, all the frontages would be improved, all the storm would be taken underground and through, there's some drainage, rain-water management structures that are put in to the boulevard, and that would all be done as part of the civil engineering for the project.
Okay. So I don't think that any of my proposals should cost the developer more money, and they would make for more satisfied homeowners, I can tell them that. I've lived there for 20 years and I, I know what we value there. We're not unreasonable people. We knew years ago that development was coming sometime, and we simply want the bylaws that exist for the consideration of all citizens of Coquitlam adhered to and the monitoring of proceedings of this development by the city Coquitlam's personnel to be thorough. Communication with us would be beneficial to both the developer and ourselves. Morning Star and Polygon can attest to the fact that we did not make unreasonable demands and we did monitor their work sites after hours, so we, residents that are there now can be helpful. And we would welcome knowing of intentions to blast, intentions to dig up our front street, and the appreciation care by the developer's personnel for the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this item? Are there any, please come forward.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Kevin Healy, I'm with Creus Engineering. We're working for the proponent on this. Just thought I'd clarify a couple of issues. The lane will provide access to garages for, for both sides of the street. The current municipal regulations push towards a separated garage. We're not fixed on that, and that's something that could come into discussions. The one thing I will kind of point out from looking at the way the lots are laid out is the actual distance from the garage to the homes will be shorter than the distance from the, from Dayton or Argyle to the front door, let's say. So I think people are going to have a predisposition to use the garage just because of, of distance as, as indicators, especially when it's raining. Contrary to the marketing, there does seem to be a few days there. In terms of servicing, yes, the, the proponent is well aware that we're going to have to work with Polygon on extending some of those services. We are looking to do some environmental enhancement with the existing ditch and tie it into both stormwater and environmental benefits. Just thought some of that information may be useful. Thank you.
Probably was. Any other speakers to this item? Any other speakers to this item? Third and final time, any other speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item closed. Madam.
Item three is an application to amend the city's zoning bylaw to rezone the property at 1139 Sharland Avenue from RS1 one-family residential to RT1 two-family residential, bylaw number 4392, 2013.
The site of this rezoning application is on the north side of Sharland, east of Marmont Street. The site is designated as neighborhood attached residential under the official community plan. Zoning on the site and to the east and south is RS1 one-family residential. Zoning to the west, RS3 one-family residential. And to the north, C2 general commercial. A single-family dwelling is currently located on the site. The applicant is proposing to rezone the site to RT1 two-family residential to facilitate subdivision into two single-family lots, each with a carriage, carriage house accessed off the rear lane. Staff are recommending all final readings to rezoning bylaw number 4392.
Are there any speakers to this item? Are there any speakers to this item? Third and final time, are there any speakers to this item? Seeing none, I'll declare this item and the public hearing closed. We'll convene a council meeting in about, in a couple of minutes as staff have to switch some switches.